Clock. So we will turn all our recordings on and with that. I will call the order to Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, Prairie Grove City Council Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Chris Powell.
Here.
Audrey Wessel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Here.
Tony Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Stoneball.
Here.
Kevin Andrews.
Here.
Paul Getmars.
Here.
Yeah.
That will move to public comment. Mrs. Collins, how are you today?
I'm great. How are you?
Well, good. You said, you said you was only gonna take a little bit of time. You got three minutes.
Just a moment. You don't even have to put a timer on it. My name is Myra Collins and I have been a resident in Washington County my whole life. Um, I am a third or fifth generation resident from the Brentwood area. I have over a decade of service with the Washington County Port House now. And I am seeking a Washington County collector position. So I have worked in the collectors before. I currently am in human resources. And I'm just getting out here to get my name, my face out here. I know you all have a lot of city business to take care of, but I just wanted to take the time to come and introduce myself and um, just letting you know who I am and I'm interested in being your next collector. Voting is in March.
Yeah. Mrs. Collins, you said you worked for Washington County now? What do you do at Washington County?
So I'm in the human resources right now. I've uh, served in, I've been a dispatcher at the sheriff's office. I've worked in the collector's office. I was the corn court coordinator for many years and I'm currently in the human resources. So um, I have a, a spectrum that gives me um, I feel a very qualified um, qualities to be part of the collectors, in that collector's position. Yeah.
You're gonna try a fight less, so.
What I will do is make sure that it's dispersed and I have heard some resolutions being put out there to be able to, people to choose where their taxes go. I don't think it's good because it's uh, so as somebody a Shiloh Christian, they can give their money, grandparents could give their money to that section. What's gonna happen to the public schools? I'm just saying.
Isn't already happening right now?
Well, there can be charters and there can be private schools where they pay tuition, but the taxes aren't going to that. If you live in a school district, those taxes go to that school district.
Even though, even though they bring tuition to Shiloh Christian, that's so they're gonna bring those all the street.
If they live in that district, those taxes.
The property taxes go to that school district you live in.
Anyway, that is something that is gonna be on the board and I will show up and be a part of those discussions and I'm not afraid to give my opinion and stand up for the best things that are for those schools, those rural fire departments, just taking care of that money that's dispersed there. So anyway, Myra Collins, I appreciate your time.
Do y'all still take two-party checks? Post, post baby?
In queue.
Any other public comment? There are none. We'll move to the approval of the October twentieth twenty five, excuse me, October twentieth, twenty twenty five regular Prairie Grove City Council meeting. And on November thirteenth, twenty twenty five budget meeting, you know, moved.
Second.
I do have a motion by Tony, second by Bree, all in favor say aye. Propose same song. Motion passes. Treasures report was sent out for the month of October. Any questions or concerns? There are none. We'll move it to order. We had no unfinished business. So with that, we'll move to our first ordered business. You'll see that it says approval of presentations. We're just on a submission of presentations. Um, Larry's gonna actually change a few things and then we'll approve them next month. One of those things is actually Mr. Scott Davis and we're gonna add a line item for twenty nine hundred dollars to do some historical registry. Mrs. Davis, would you like to tell the council what you're doing for us?
Yes, I'm Scott Davis. I'm doing most of the year. Uh, in twenty seventeen, I did an oral history project for Prairie Grove. And since then, I've done several of them. My most recent was Benton County and I was talking to the form court and they said, well, where are your videos? And I said, well, they're on YouTube, right? They said, well, what if something happens to YouTube or who knows, you know, in twenty years where those videos will be, you should get them taken into the prior collection, the David and Barbara Prior Center of Oral History. In fact, it was part of the University of Arkansas. So it was quite a long process to get them first to agree to take any of that videos and then the process by which they have to do it. But one of the things they like is to have a good transcript of each video. Now, they're not actually requiring the transcript. They're requiring a lot of other stuff, a, a new video file, a new uh, uh, audio file and a whole bunch of stuff I'm gonna give them for each video. But it's gonna go on their website and then under their special collections and they'll include Prairie Grove's video. So essentially, I'm asking for a hundred dollars of video. Plus sales tax and then, and then I've done one that was paid for. I did uh, uh, Dr. Bain's uh, mom, Joanne Bain. I interviewed her within the last six months. And I would recommend that we include her video in this project too. That'll make it thirty. And it'll come out, with, with the sales tax, it'll come out to about thirty-two hundred. And so, and I asked the shallow, how much that I should charge for doing a transcript and they basically told me I was crazy to do it for a hundred bucks a piece, but I, I'm what, and what I'm gonna do is edit the, the uh, YouTube transcript and, and so it'll, the changes I make will go onto the YouTube channel and then also uh, I'll go back and do the final one, uh, just on, on the computer typing it myself. Because AI can help you, but you still have to go through all the, all the transcripts. So anyway, it's a good investment for the city and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir.
And the city did pay for these originally in two thousand seventeen and commission these and uh, we do have these on a hard drive as well. In fact, we've got a couple of hard drives. The museum has one and the city has one.
And what it's for?
These are oral histories. There's about thirty old numbers, I'll say. I'm in one. A lot of the people that were recorded or have deceased. So just oral histories of the history of Prairie Grove.
Just history of that.
Yes.
And that's why I wanted to include Joanne Bain, she's ninety or turning ninety. So that's about as old as.
Some, some of these people's memories goes back to the thirties and forties. Mine did not.
Mine no neighborhood.
They're on YouTube.
What was that? What's the YouTube channel?
She was ninety-one.
It's on one of the city's channels. I've got, I can send you the link.
Okay, cuz yeah, cuz I can. Cuz I'll add it to all.
Look up Prairie Grove Oral History and it'll pull up.
We're gonna do all of them.
All of those.
I actually got in two different videos. I did a video that was pretty much a great interview with little interruption, okay? And then I did a second video where I had the pictures where they say, well, my dad owed the sale warrant, we should go to figure out what. So uh, Myra Center doesn't want the ones with pictures. That's too, they, they want only video and just the straight recording, so, which will make it easier for me, but but and, but anyway, they have a way of doing things and it's a lot more complicated than the way I have, but it's good that we're getting it in their library.
And my, my plan is to add this to the sales and use tax.
Okay, that's all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And so, as far as tonight, we really just need a, a simple vote for the submission because we need to submit the budget by November and just understand that in, let's y'all oppose it. That adding his thirty-two hundred dollars is a line item and that'll be approved next month and in total with the budget. But I mean, I think Mr. Davis just wants to know that he has y'all's support on this. So if y'all oppose it, then, then we need to say it. If not, we'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission.
Who was my second?
I'd.
Paula. Paula, uh, motion by Tony, second by Paula, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve same song. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All the way.
Hold on.
Uh, item number two is the approval of the longevity bonuses for the twenty twenty-five year end. I sent y'all an email kind of showing you the, the breakdown. I think y'all have seen it over the last three years. In essence, what we have is a four hundred dollars for anyone at sport time or less than a year, five hundred dollars for one to five, seven fifty for five to ten, and then a thousand for ten to more. The premiums have went up twenty-five for the less than a year, twenty-five for the one to five, a hundred dollars for the five to ten, and then one seventy-five for the ten or more. And then once again, this goes back to just wanting to put a premium on really what it is, right? A longevity bonus and make sure that we're putting a premium on people who's, who's spending um, the length of their career with us. And so all of this is already in last year's budget. Do you want? Cause everybody.
Mayor Scott Davis just asked me if what the line item was for those that have been here forty-six years.
He's, he's, he's part of that ten or more, you mean?
I figured he was hitting them pain days.
No, he's hitting them. The, the one thing, the one thing I will ask you before I ask for a motion. We don't have anything for seasonal. We don't have to do anything for seasonal, but we have two guys that's been helping our trash as we've been short. And so um, I would like y'all to consider a hundred dollars for each of those two guys. And that would just give them something for throwing trash for us. By no means do we have to, but it adds two hundred dollars to the, to the longevity. It's just a, it's really just something to say thank you for, for what they're doing for us.
Second.
Have a motion by Doug, a second by Bree, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve same song. Motion passes. Thank you. Item three is the city ordinance to codify our prob, uh, well, prior ordinance and amend the commercial solid waste rates. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chuck.
While we were doing our, obviously we all burn counts, but during the case, they're finding that some of the rates have been addressed in many years. And so one of the things we're looking at this time with the commercial rates and we're quite a bit behind on that. This is two thousand and seven, it's the last time we ever addressed and, and so.
Recommend increases and as far as the rentals on the dumpsters and things like that, we just parted that case to, to much show what we're spending. But the four-year life of the dumpsters will at least pay for itself. It'll make something off the cars or the dumpsters or anything. But we wanted to bring it up where at least we were covering the cost of what it takes to purchase one of these twenty square meters.
That's gonna give us the number. I remember having that.
Yep, so it is thirty-two gallon container is ten dollars a month. Um, two thirty-two gallon containers, seventeen dollars a month, four thirty-two, twenty-eight, and then eight thirty-two containers, forty dollars a month. Additional bags.
The one that was never ever caught. And that's, but that is, is like a small business that is treated like a residence where they're picking up bags of trash.
And then the dumpsters, it kind of goes between what you have, whether you have a, um, you know, a, a four yard or three or one point five and then depends on how many dumps you get. So it can go anywhere from twenty-two dollars on one pickup a week to up to four, which would be eighty-two dollars.
We have commercial businesses that started to use one pickup a week, but then we have some that we have large dumpsters and they're taking like three tons a week. And then they would rather us try to pick them up again on weekends because like Friday to Monday, kind of dumped it all on Monday. I just like saw an egg and a taxi, things like that. Run seven days a week, so.
This is catching us up.
This is catching us up from being behind.
Who's been rules play for the first reading of title only?
Second.
I have a motion by Doug, a second by Bree. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris Powell.
Yeah.
Audrey Wessel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham. Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Getmars.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yeah.
One note, it's setting the rates for the next three years. That goes up and next year and another increase a year after.
An ordinance to codify a prior ordinance and amend commercial solid waste rates.
Move first and rule away second, third and not fourth.
Second.
Do you have a motion by Doug, a second by Bree? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wessel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Getmars.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Item four, the city ordinance to reserve certain lands owned by Justin and Crystal Barnett. And with that, if you'll um, throw your attention to Mr. Orish.
So this is Richardson Road. Richardson Road is the road that leads down to the Valley View Golf Course, if that helps you clear your eyes where we're at here. No, this is Highway sixty-two. So right across the street will be probably be the medical. So Richardson Road is the one that leads down into Valley View. Uh, when we did the twenty twenty-four rezoning, all of this highway fronted, kept zone mixed used B two. It included this track right here. Um, there is residential property across the street, residential property there, residential property here. These are all single-family houses. The people that bought that lot, they tried for a while to resell it commercially and didn't get any interest in it, but they have had interest in it for single-family residential. So they came to us just based on the fact that there is so much single-family residential around that planning efficient did make recognition to rezon just this one track from M U B two to R one five.
Is this still in?
Yes, it is. Mark said that for a long time.
We've been ruled play to order first reading of title only.
Have a motion by Doug, a second by Paula. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wessel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball. Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Getmars.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yeah.
An ordinance to provide for the rezoning of certain lands in Prairie Grove, Arkansas, currently owned by Justin and Crystal Barnett. Modification to zoning map is important.
You've probably been ruled way second, third and not fourth.
Have a motion by Doug, a second by Paula. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wessel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Getmars.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yeah.
Motion passes. And with that, we'll move on to item five. Item five, we uh, we're actually gonna stall on. Um, what we had found out today is that the city clerk does match what y'all get paid as far as the eighteen hundred dollars a year. What, what we found out, it wasn't that it wasn't codified. It was that your, your breakdown is from your city clerk and uh, the um,
City treasurer.
The city treasurer. So you get twelve, yes. That's why it's the eighteen hundred. So either way, the goal was to match her to what y'all own. She's already matched to what.
The city treasurer gets twelve hundred and the city clerk gets six hundred.
That's why it was running and we didn't figure out why.
So we want her to go back.
Yep. No, you, she's getting paid.
So that, so that's right?
Yeah, just we.
We thought you were gonna.
And I, and I will tell y'all this because my game plan is to, in our next financial year is to move the city council uh, another notch. Obviously, that comes via y'all approval and our finances. And then we all leave and she'll move with y'all as well. And so item six is an ordinance to amend the provisions regarding the composition, excuse me, the, the pay of the mayor. And so um, this is, y'all made a motion the other day to, to increase mine to three percent COLA as, as we did with all city employees.
Second, first, yeah.
Yeah, make a motion first.
Make a motion.
It's an.
It's an order. I gotta read this thing off of my phone. Let's go, one's good.
He's gonna force that one on you, Chris.
I'm trying to hang on.
Looking for a script.
Um, I moved to spin the rules, replace the ordinance on the first reading by the title only.
Second.
Have a motion by Paula. Second by Bree. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Getmars.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yeah.
An ordinance to. You need that? Parker, I'm sorry. It went in your way. Gonna take, take your, bend the way. An ordinance to increase the mayor salary.
No.
Go. Oh, no, no. Uh, I moved to further spin the rules. Wait a second, any further readings and adopt, adopt ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion by Chris, a second by Bree, by Wessel. Second by Audrey. Any further discussion? I move, there are none. Roll call.
Hey, Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wessel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yeah.
Paul Getmars.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yeah.
Definitely texted that, Jimmy.
Motion. The moment we get off track, Doug. Everything runs smooth and we get off track. Um, item seven, a resolution to accept donation of real property from Cox Development LLC. Laura, do you have anything that you want to explain?
I didn't bring any vehicles up for that. That's the one in Snyder.
Yeah, someone in Snyder Grove.
So basically in Snyder Grove, the land that the city just acquired for the new city park, it's gonna help everybody, okay? There's two residential lots there that belong to Hancock's that a portion of the back of them is in floodplain. And they didn't want to deal with the floodplain regulations, which is quite an ordeal having to hire engineers. You have to file for what's called a loan with FEMA. And it can affect the entire lot. So by donating this joint, this land that joins what we just purchased, by donating these two little strips to the city where it joins, they get out of having to do any of the floodplain stuff. It doesn't affect us because ours is in the floodplain anyway, so. So they're, they're giving us this, these two little pieces of land.
The lots are still big enough for them to put a single-family house on. It's just the regulations changed a couple of years ago where now if they're gonna bring it in the floodplain, you have to do the entire lot. And so this eliminates that, that need of that requirement. So it just saves them time and money.
So that's our, that's our law.
And we gained a little bit more space.
But so we can all, all in filter, right? And take it out of the floodplain?
Yeah. But we'll use this part of the parking lot and stuff that we already have started down there. Move to approve.
A motion by Doug, a second by Paula. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose same song. Resolution passes. Resolution to approve a contract with Millstones Inc. And this is um, we're trying to work with uh, with outside party to come in for our downtown easements. And so we don't have the in and outs of everything. We just didn't want to lose thirty days and not get my contract underway. We still kind of work out the details of those easements. This would be kind of worst-case scenario. As you see in the contract, it's thirty-five thousand or reduced. We think that it will be reduced, but if we have to acquire every easement, then that would be the highest it would go and I'd say we just didn't want to lose thirty days and, and waiting for um, the, the chance to move forward with the.
Well, they're just gonna go.
This is one of the rules they keep changing on us where now we have to have somebody with, with expertise in the land acquisition and the approvals. They're not just a standard approval. So it has to be somebody that used to dealing with this type of government funding. And so unfortunately, there's not very many people nor both are. Lot more expensive than we anticipated, but isn't that very?
I wouldn't say that. We'll probably be able to reduce the number of easements again. So we think the price is gonna come down considerably, but we want to. That would be the max.
Yeah, that's not, I told them I had to have a non- exceed.
A non-exceed thirty-five thousand five hundred.
So this is the worst-case scenario.
We think it'll be considerably less.
Next, Bruce.
I have a motion by Chris and a second by Audrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same songs. Resolution passes. Resolution to approve changes to the fire department personnel policy. And JC, you can, you can add anything if I'm wrong or nothing, but in essence, last year we adopted or changed that policy to match the police department. But one provision we, we uh, we left off, I'm assuming, was the carryover of cop time. So we're uh, proven this tonight, we would just do what we tried to do last year, which was match, first responders would match police and fire.
Do you publish it? What's the?
One point one, three.
Yeah. Which, which matches the police.
I'm moving. Second.
I have a motion by Chris, a second by Doug. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve same song. Motion passes. Resolution to approve changes to the police department personnel policy. Uh, workman, I don't have the ins and outs of all of this. When you want to tell us what you, what you're asking for.
Yeah, so there's two policies. Um, first one is animal patrol policy. There's not a lot of changes. Um, so a few years ago, the city went to a, when we house animals, um, what we don't go five days and get them before they're adopted out of the keep right longer. Um, with the police department having our animal trail operator, we also have our own policy. So it countered, it, it's working against one another. So what we did is we matched our police policy. We're still the old one. It had ten days, which we don't open it, it's open five days. And we also took out the verbiage um, back years ago before we had the Prairie Grove pound. Fortunately, we bring in animals straight. A lot of those were ultimately euthanized. Um, so we took out all that language now of also, you know, they gone to the no kill shelter or often if they happen to happen, they transfer it to the county, they pay the fee and the county will do that. So just taking out that language and clearing it up and matching ours with what authority in the city. Um, so really it's mind your stuff on the animal control. The um, benefits, so three years ago, we went to the fifty dollar an hour rate because just when you get overwhelmed with all, any security, bike races, churches, everybody comes, so we went to a fifty dollar an hour rate, if y'all remember that. Um, the university, which we did a lot of work for them, it was, it was at forty rate. So what we did is we up that to the minimum fifty for the university. That way our policy matches across the board. And essentially what we did with Dr. Washington County, they do the minimum and then they do overtime rate plus three an hour. So we're adopting that policy. That's, that's it.
I'm making. Second.
I have a motion by Chris and a second by Doug. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say the same song. Motion passes. The guy will move to report to committee sanitation, super.
Everything's going fairly smoothly now that we have the part-time seasonal health that's gonna help us to the end of the year. We went through four employees. They said they could do it, but after about two days of long been on the truck, it is pretty.
Yeah, they showed up.
One didn't show up at all. But anyway, um, so, but we've also got an opening now for a driver. Uh, one of our employees has been on extended medical leave. It doesn't look like his doctor will ever release him to drive a truck yet. And so he's, he's out of all this leave and so unemployment has ended and so will be advertised for another C D of a trash truck driver. But other than that, everything's going pretty good. The guy did a really good job learning double routes. Um, the other day, everybody's jumped in now, so it went pretty smoothly.
Thank you, Chuck. Street department, Audrey Wessel.
Pretty check.
Uh, street department's been pretty quiet. Uh, we've been doing some, we've heard of drainage work. You've seen some projects going on. Uh, some behind the police department, some with that, uh, by any group. Then we got another project that's gonna go on, uh, industrial that'll start pretty soon. So just working on storm rains and, and streets.
Officer. Ball and sewer, like some ball and the credit code rate, something like that. We talked about that in the budget. We might have to do some more research.
Yeah.
It was just a, a note I had on there.
Um, the sanitary sewer projects are going really well. They've got some uh, finished up testing to do on a new lines on the industrial end on baggage street. Hopefully they'll have that done in the next ten days or so and we'll be able to close the project out before the end of the year. Uh, getting ready to advertise your bid for the park street improvements for sanitary sewer. That we've got about six hundred feet of uh, plumbing line we're gonna install over there to try to take some of the load off of the residential area from the commercial development that's going on behind McDonald's and, and Domino's and those areas because all that goes through Sundown. So, so those will be bid pretty soon.
Paul, first thing, all right, excuse me. Kevin Andrews.
Um, everything's collected and uh, counted up. We're looking at twenty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-nine cents.
Of course.
And we're still working with Washington County right now. I know y'all don't see the ins and outs of all of this, but um, me and uh, Washington County judge talks probably about twice a week because we gotta get a contract on uh, collecting all that. And so those conversations are going well. And so hopefully we'll have something in next month or so. Fire department, Chris Powell.
Um, I'm sure we got chief's uh, email, but I hear sirens every night. So I guess you're still busy.
Because of the usual.
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully you did receive the invite for Christmas party.
Yeah.
December eighth, seven o'clock. Very long.
Thank you, Tim. Paulson, Rick, first problem.
Um, Jeff, we did get all the lights fixed and money for crack. Yes. Okay. And the wall's going as scheduled?
Everything's going as scheduled. Uh, electrician was over there doing some repairs on Friday. Uh, we're just about ready to start scrapping. And once the scrapping is finished, then they'll install the lights in the basement.
Did we say what colors they're going with?
Uh, the.
The blue and the.
Two.
Yeah, blue and brown.
Is that one of the green, is what it was? Yeah.
Dark blue, dark blue and then green perimeter to match the attention force.
Um, skate park has. Um, skate park has some graffiti on it. Do we?
We'll just have to look at it.
Look at that again, yeah. And such a thing. Um, lot park, how's that?
Lot park doing really well. Uh, they just got two winter ads and, uh, turning on all the heat, so we should keep the bathrooms open all winter.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
The, the use of those facilities up there, is it just first come, first served? Or do you have to? The tennis courts and the
Yes.
Is whoever's there?
Yep, they're there.
Now, the just so we understand a little bit more about the pickleball, like pulled it out, had to cure before they could put the overlay in. I won't say overlay, it'll have to sit, fake it for a while as well, or?
About three to five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, just need to be warm, dry weather for the drive, cure out.
So I'm not a pickleball player, but that fence is supposed to be that short?
The
Chailing ground it?
It's six foot tall.
It is. It got a lot of money guys play games.
More like a wiffle ball, so they
Is it real? Okay.
But heavier.
But heavier, okay. I'm, I'm thinking tennis, I guess, no?
I mean, I've seen tennis balls over that.
I'm sure you have.
Well, you jump over that. Gracious, what do you think?
Who fans promotes better players?
Is that what it is? Okay. I'll take it.
Thank you, gentlemen. So police department, next one, Doug.
Very cute. Uh, busy. Um, I didn't send out the numbers. Usually we get those dispatch law from Washington County, so maybe they didn't didn't want to send out, we said something about jail fees, who knows? But, uh, busy as always. I'm, I'm like JC, there's no shortage of calls. Big accidents, I know the past few months we've fallen out of them because we've had some fatalities. That's, you know, we're still averaging about three, I would say, three accidents a week. So, um, mainly on highway sixty-two. Dressing all those speeder complaints all over town as we can. December sixth will be our shopping mall. That's when we'll be taking all kids shopping. And it'll be at Walmart again, then we'll pay. Tim Lender and that venue's been over twenty thousand dollars. So we've done it for many, many years. So we'll be, we'll be there if anybody wants to come, uh, hang out with us if you're available.
When is it?
December sixth.
It's a Saturday, right?
What time? It's seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty a.m. We usually start shopping right at eight.
Where, where do you? Well, we're no powers, that kind of, you mean?
Right, yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, where do you, where do you get your names for the kids that you're gonna abuse?
Most does come from the school. We, we partner with the school through counselors. Um, but I think what makes Prairie Grove unique and like a lot of the organization, you know, they raise money. It's good if they send, send it out. Here, you know, like if anybody in this room literally knows their families in Prairie Grove that has a need, tell me the mayor, the captain, um, and we will take care of those families. I think that what makes us unique. Obviously, we can't do it every, you know, we do got a budget, but, um, typically that's what we do. And I think that's what makes our program actually stand out.
Did you say how many you had? I'm sorry if I missed that.
I don't know if we've got it told you yet. We're still working on it. Last year, we, we took around eighty-five kids last year, so that should be united.
Wow.
So I just take anymore? Okay. Sorry.
That's it.
Can you still take kids if you have to abuse somebody?
Yes, so we try to get, um, it means that, well, we just, no, we get with counselors at the school. So each, each schooling has a counselor. They work with our SROs and they're, they're putting that list together.
I want your keyhole.
They don't want anything.
Paul doesn't have it. I think your guys are numbered. I just think our Thanksgiving, words from the counselors were up significantly this year, so I wouldn't be surprised to see an uptick in y'all shopping as well.
Yeah.
I want a reason on this, so.
Oh, and did everybody get an email or something?
Yes.
There was a little bit issue part, it was going to be the fifteenth, then realized, well, we got a pretty budget, so.
For dinner?
Yeah.
Yours dinner seems a lot nicer.
Now, we, we have sponsoring that takes care of us on that as well, so.
That's it, Chief?
Yeah, sir.
Long range plan and regret.
Yep, um, we had a lengthy meeting for you. Uh, first things first is we had, well, we had a discussion before this concept flat about rezoning, uh, two parcels on Cactus Jack Road from A one to R two and M U B two.
That's all one five, they should say R two.
Uh, we were all in agreeance. There wasn't a
This was all rezoned previously a couple of years ago, and it just made us think that they got zoned differently.
Yeah, so we mentioned several things.
So that's like, that's like mother family.
Yes, R two, yeah, we punched this track like that. And it'd be this entire part all there.
Yeah. So that was that. Um, and then the one Larry, Eric had pulled up. We had a concept flat for a large scale development by Matt Taylor at one one six two two Cactus Jack Road. One one six three zero Cactus Jack Road, one one six six zero Cactus Jack Road, fifty-two units.
And they had previously approved something similar to this. He's redesigned it to the original one, have the same number of units, but they were in more of a circle.
Right, right, right.
Cactus Jack Road, uh,
Ari, what did y'all approve on Thursday? Was it just concept though?
Just the concept.
What about the reason?
That was just a discussion. There was no, there was just a question.
Okay.
Uh,
Trying to figure out why I wasn't on our agenda, you vote for it. We feel like this problem.
Yeah. Uh, these are fifty-two town home units with a garage. It's just a little bit different than the one he originally submitted that we approved, um, as far as layout. But other than that, fire wanted a second egress. Other than that, we were good with it.
So it's all mother family?
Town homes.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so, not necessarily.
Try to flex townhomes and quad, like, are you even like?
Behind your garage, check on three, four, nine hours.
No, they'll be up front.
There's four faces.
Like the garage. So the probably three bedroom.
Right.
With a garage.
Yeah.
And upstairs, it all.
Yeah.
Again, just the concept flat. So really he was asking if we were okay with layout, any glaring issues, which fire would have been one. And we said it was fine. Yeah. Um, any other questions on that one? Okay. Then we had the request for the rezoning, which we already discussed. Uh, request for a, they, they asked for intermediate. We changed that to a long-term barbecue by Red Dirt Barbecue. That's over by the Flash Mart. Um, past the post office. It's already, but it's, it's been there.
That's the car wash.
That's the car wash. But then it's really, I mean, I think someone had a question about a generator, uh, but they're pretty far away from a home. Um, and I think we were looking at maybe plugging in, but
It's the food truck.
Yes, it's a firefighter's.
It's been there for a while, but he's only been operating on the short term side. He's been operating for a period of time. We've had zero complaints.
Yeah. So we approved that. And then we had a conditional use request for the following. Please do not be confused, as we were, that doggy is part of both. But the first was a doggy daycare on Heritage Parkway. Um, they are owned. Wait, which one did they already own?
That was this one.
Okay.
No, no, no.
That's, that's your, yep.
The, uh, the law already, and it's just the typical doggy daycare boarding house.
Right next
That's next to David Truett.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. And then this one is what?
Well, what, that's a whole separate.
Oh, it's separate, okay.
Yeah, so there's just the same person asking for two different things. Um, so we approved the conditional use for the doggy daycare. And then the residential boarding house is actually not a doggy boarding house. It's a human boarding house.
Already a single family house there.
Yes, and basically
What's a human boarding?
Well, what she's wanting to do is rent out each room.
They're going to add on to the house with additional bedrooms.
Yeah, and so like instead of renting the home, it, it's kind of like an apartment of the of a each, they would rent out the room with the bathroom.
There'll be a common space for living and kitchen, and then the bedrooms would be somewhere at the door before they do in there.
Well, so like, yeah, a boarding house was really the only word that fit, but they had four total bedrooms that they're wanting to do with the addition. Um, and there was plenty of parking.
What is this? Who, who, what's the name of this?
Parkedies.
That's not it.
No, no, no.
No, that's not, yeah.
Does, does the resident preview have any votes to that?
We did have. And she was, I think, fine once she heard.
She was in one of these houses right here that backed up to it.
She thought it was going to be a doggy.
When she found out it was a boarding house, she was happy because she was afraid it was going to be the doggy daycare.
Right, like a secondary house, but it was daycare, but it's Yeah, so it, everything was fine. There was no issues with any of that. Um, and then we reconvened as a board of adjustments to discuss minimum lot sizes in an A one and on septic. Uh, we had an instance on Orfa Road and they submitted a lot line adjustment with neighboring property, which created let, a lot less than one acre. Uh, they actually were kind of doing the neighbors, well, they were doing a favor because
They got the lot line over right here, just this little triangle, and it left there with less than one acre.
To put a septic.
But you still, they live in a septic, less than an acre.
Yeah, they had luck with the health department approval.
It's like point nine one or something, I think.
I mean, it's given us, yeah.
Uh, so we did approve that. Um, lastly, there is an open spot on planning commission that I think mayor is working on.
Currently looking currently.
What?
Currently looking to.
Currently looking. JC is becoming Larry, if y'all didn't know.
Yeah.
Cool little transition they got going on there.
Been promoted, so thought in December he'll, he'll be alongside Larry, at least in December, and then in January he'll, he'll take that spot. And then Bree, and this really makes perfect sense when you think that she's a vote member on the planning commission and a vote member on the council, will move her into the town. And that way she only votes in a tiebreaker and she just controls the planning commission.
I was fine with it as long as I still got to speak. If I had to say that, I would die.
She really just represents the city council in part.
Yeah.
My best. Uh, that's all we had at the old Long Range Park.
All right. Thank you, Bree.
Yep.
Senior citizens, follow it more.
Lance, uh, text me today and said they got a, a check from the Lions Club, and I saw that, or Doug had presented it for twenty-five hundred dollars and a five thousand dollar check from our best foundation, our best. Um, next month. And then on the, what is it?
Yeah.
On December the sixth, they're having a silver jewelry sale there. Some of it's solid, I mean, sterling silver, some of it's plated. But, um, there's somebody that goes there that's dying, that's the real. Anyway, it's from ten a.m. till two P.M. Cash or check only, please. December the sixth. That's it.
Thanks, ma'am. Library, Tony Cunningham.
Seeing tell we're running so far ahead of schedule. I do have quite a lengthy presentation for the library, so. Year date, just picked this up hot off the press this afternoon. They have checked out items at the library this year, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight. And that's a total number of patrons of forty-two hundred good folks been down there visiting the library. The only thing, we got some total outstanding fines of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents. You folks need to get your stuff back into the library.
Thirty thousand dollars for, I think, hides.
I mean, it's on the picture.
I want them to know.
I think we need to see the bling separate one.
How far does that go back, Tommy?
No kidding.
To seventeen?
Seventy-four?
All the way, all the way.
All of it.
They know they're not going to collect it.
In the jam, it's the library.
They forgive debts, they're here.
Yeah.
Some of the things our library does, involvement in the community. They have summer reading kickoff pool party. They, reading and attendance at the school for special programs. End of the year school tours of the library for the elementary school. They have a float in the Christmas parade. They have special programs for various age groups throughout the year that are free and open to the public. They have a winter coat food drive. And this year they're partnering with the school backpack program. And I was down there this afternoon and they've got a ton of, uh, food items that have been delivered there. So that's coming up. Uh, take books to the nursing home for residents unable to make the lumbering and community outreach with Z cares in town. So folks, our library is, is very active in our community and I appreciate Amanda and Megan and, and Scott for what they do down there.
But what's my favorite thing I've done there?
And you've got a picture, huh? Thanks. It's rare that's all I have.
All right, uh, the process committee's done. The only announcements I have is that McDonald's will open tomorrow morning.
Ronald looking cute out there with his iHeart cream shirt.
Um, December fourth, twenty twenty-five at the elementary school will be the Christmas reading night. I think they're still looking for people to, to go and read. If you want to reach out to the counselors, I, I have one that's large, but usually read something.
I want, well, we usually have planning commission that night, so that's always a disaster for me.
I mean, I'd be at the next one of the mission. Oh, I'll be late to the next one of the mission. And I just want to update you on, we hope to have lights that would light up this place as you walked in tonight. And Ricky was supposed to come out on Friday and he couldn't make it. So we hope to have lights in all the onings out here. But by the next time we have a evening meeting, place will be littered for you all. Any other announcements?
Don't forget, December thirteenth, Term Homes, Prairie Grove Historical Society, tickets are available at City Hall, Crescent, Daisy's and Olive's and a couple other places. I don't remember where they're at. Um, two, twelve o'clock to four o'clock, I believe, is what we're running. And got a good, got a good slate of houses this year, so I think it's going to be pretty good. Then cocoa crawl starts over to six. Get ready for some overdosing on cocoa. And then parade starts at six.
Doug, are you still taking orders for the lodge?
Yes. If you still get, still order your buck turkey. You want to announce that, Tom? Don't put the mouth like, thank you.
How do we order it, Tom?
Sir, Doug.
Doug, how do we order it?
You can leave it, like, one of us know, or there's an email, the masonic four thirty-six at ppc.com. Taking orders through Saturday, fifty dollars for fourteen pounds of buck turkey. You'll pick it up on the Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
I have an announcement, kind of on behalf of the school. Uh, but the middle school did a literacy night the other night on the football field. And part of it was to help raise some money to cover the lunch fines. I would just like to give you all an opportunity to take a guess at what the lunch fines are for the entire school system at Prairie Grove. So, anybody want to guess?
I guess I have to rehearse the library.
A hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Saw it on the paper, so I wasn't going to guess. So right now, the school lunch fines are a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for kindergarten through twelfth grade.
Is that one year?
Um, well, so they, it can accumulate through your entire career. And then you do not get your diploma if you have an overdue lunch fine. But like the middle school itself is at like thirty-eight thousand dollars. So the school is working on ways to contact parents. Uh, she had, she was telling me kind of the breakdown of the numbers. She has like twenty people that it's less than like twenty or thirty dollars. I mean, I've been guilty of that before, just not doing that. But then they've got several kids already in the middle school, which is four through six, that have accumulated over like eighteen hundred dollars worth of lunch fines.
Be a hard discussion if graduation bomb on you.
Yeah. They are currently trying to figure out some ways to fundraise or plan or seek business donations. A lot of times people will come in and pay off the seniors so they get to walk. But as you can see, this is a very large issue and it's only going to grow. So if anybody has any ideas of ways to help combat that.
I'd like to say it sounds like we need to talk to the state.
Well, I mean, I do feel like a lot of that's a school issue, but I do think awareness is very good for everyone to have, and this is a great place to make that announcement. So I, I would talk to maybe a school board member. There might be one in the crowd. But, or you could call the school. I know they're trying to figure out ways to
If people would go out of
Free and reduce lunch. Yes, that's a big argument that I had back is require that. Do you know how much they raised at the? A thousand dollars on, on chili, which is actually amazing. Yeah, so it's not a lot, but do what? Yeah, mark down, well, but with this week going, it's probably right back.
There's a grant out there that Cleveland School District got, but their kids get free.
Yeah, so does Lincoln, but I think you have to have enough. Yeah, so does Lincoln, but I think you have to have enough of the. Students fill out the free and reduce lunch forms, and we, I think we struggle with that a lot.
I think everybody should fill them out.
Can you not make it man, they don't make it mandatory to fill them out?
Fill it out.
I think that's what they're trying to figure out.
They're talking restriction for.
Yeah.
The thing is, if you, if you hand a paper out to everybody, they all fill it out, and you can disqualify the people who don't.
Well, they do put it out.
Oh.
People choose to not return, or they don't know how to fill it out, I mean, there's a lot of reasons.
enrollment packet, they said it's in there, they just can't fill it out.
And at all, we did open that, they knew, they knew, uh, athletic, maybe on the house.
Yeah.
Like department children.
Right, right. So anyways, y'all can sleep on that tonight, figure out how to come up with that money.
Come up with that.
Maybe breaking a record tonight.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, seeing how you covered the agenda from top to bottom, I'm saying nothing else, no other comments, I move to adjourn.
I think.
A motion, second, all in favor say aye.